All right, we're gonna get this meeting started. We're already five minutes late and I know that everybody is very busy today. I want to welcome everybody this morning. Thank you all for coming and being here with us today. I want to briefly go over how this meeting will proceed. The first item on our agenda is the presentation of the canvas. We will hear about the county's legal responsibility regarding canvassing each election and the official canvas will be presented. For the second agenda item, we'll hear a report on Election Day issues, including how polling places were selected, among other things. After the presentation, we will invite registered speakers to the podium. I trust that if you wanted to speak, you have filled out a form in the plaza within the auditorium and have been given a number. Welcome Steve Gallardo. If not, you may wish to register at that table. I will provide some specific instructions regarding speakers at that time. So, that being said, item one, we've asked Colleen Connor to be here to talk about the statutory authority and what a canvas is and what we are obligated to do today with the canvas. So, item number one, canvassing the returns for the March 22, 2016 Presidential Preference Election. So, Colleen, if you could take us through that.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. The canvas for the Presidential Preference Election is the official certification of the results of the election. It must be done within 10 days and it is done by congressional district. The canvas is then provided, the official canvas is then provided to the Secretary of State who combines the, all of the counties into one single statewide canvas. Once the canvas is completed, if anyone has grounds for challenging the election, he or she must be an elector of the state of Arizona and may do so only after the canvas is done. And that would have to be filed within five days of the campus.
Okay.
Just to recap, the official canvas is a duty of the Board of Supervisors, every Board of Supervisors. It's not discretionary. It may be postponed only on a day-to-day basis when the results are not yet completed, if there are still ballots yet to count. However, once the ballots are all counted, the Board has the duty to approve the official canvas.
Right. Okay. With that, are there any questions for Colleen or statements?
Mr. Chairman, just, I guess, a couple.
Supervisor Gallardo.
Just a couple of questions. So, because I was asked this question a number of times and unfortunately, I wasn't familiar with how the canvas process works. So, if for whatever reason, the Board, for whatever reason, decided, no, they were not going to canvass the election, what happens?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Gallardo, the official vote would not be official until there is a canvas approved by a majority of the Board members. And then, if this Board of Supervisors held up that canvas, it would delay the statewide canvas. However, holding up the canvas by one county would also delay any voters' ability to challenge the election on the grounds prescribed by statute. Those election contests are strictly construed and a court would only have jurisdiction over the subject matter of the contest when an official canvas has been approved.
Now, it's, Mr. Chairman, Colleen, it's my understanding, though, that we as a Board, and all 15 counties, will have an opportunity to canvass the election and the Secretary of State's office will do a cumulative, huge canvas, I guess, the approval of the entire statewide election. At what point, I guess, would that canvas come, and it sounds like it comes, if someone wanted to challenge the canvas, that would come at the county level or the statewide level?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Gallardo, a challenge to the county's canvas would be in reference to a person elected to a county office or a ballot measure only applicable to a county. For a challenge to the statewide canvas, that would apply to any election that applied to the entire state. And that canvas, just to make a note of it, that canvas by the Secretary of State will be done on Monday, April 4.
But in that particular case, the canvas that we're doing, dealing that it was, it's a statewide vote, it's your presidential preference for the three parties. Wouldn't that be, I guess my question is, if someone wanted to challenge the election or challenge the canvas, wouldn't that be done at the state level?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Gallardo, I agree, it would be done at the statewide level. So, within five days of the Secretary of State's official canvas, somebody could file an election contest.
And, Mr. Chairman, Colleen, is there any, the statute state the grounds of any particular type of challenge? I mean, are there specific guidelines on what people can challenge? I mean, you can't just challenge because you want to challenge. You're gonna have to have a reason for challenge. Does the statute even talk about that?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Gallardo, there are five categories of grounds to challenge an election. Three involve a challenge against specifically a candidate elected, if the candidate was not eligible for the office, if the candidate was only declared the winner because he or she had an erroneous vote count, or if the person deemed elected for some misconduct, such as bribery, only prevailed because of a crime against the electoral franchise. There are two other categories, misconduct by an election board or illegal votes being tabulated.
Is there, is there any language, because I already know it's gonna come up, is there anything to say that because of the situation happening on Election Day, that could possibly be an item to be challenged or considered? I mean, the long lines and that sort of stuff, would that be, I guess that's an attorney...
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Gallardo, I think an attorney might try to be creative under those categories and might come up with some grounds. There's no case law in Arizona on this specific area.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Any other questions or statements? Okay. I guess I would be looking for a motion to... What's that? Oh, Ms. Purcell's gonna... Does Ms. Purcell present the canvas? Because we've had it presented to us here and we have it in, and we have it in document.
And, Mr. Chairman, is this broken out by congressional district? Is it broken, okay.
Good morning. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. I'm Karen Osborne, Director of Elections, and anybody that would like my job this morning. But, anyway, we bring to you the canvas. You already have a copy of the canvas and on the disk. The disk you have, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Gallardo, is the, broken out by congressional district. We bring you this. It had, shows the number of voters at the top, 1,023,8792 were eligible. It shows that 6,21976 voted for a 50.21 percent turnout. We submit the canvas to you for your approval.
And, Mr. Chairman, just dive into the, just to make sure, we have a, I know there's a lot of focus around the provisional ballots. Can you kind of give us an idea of what some of those provisional ballots were and even why? You know, the rationale, I guess the department's rationale of going through and what would be a good provisional, what's the bad provisional? Because I know there's a lot of...
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Gallardo, if we are allowed to present the presentation that we tried to present at the legislature the other day, you will hear all of that information.
Okay, so maybe save that for Agenda Item Number Two on our agenda.
We probably should have flipped them around, Mr. Chairman, where we have the presentation. This way, we know exactly what we're approving, because we have no idea what we're approving. I mean, we see the numbers, we know the numbers, but in terms of what's in the provisional ballots. We see that over 4,000 were counted, but there were nearly, close to 20,000, for whatever reason, were not counted. And I think I would feel more comfortable voting if I knew exactly what was in that 20,000, because that's what everyone's looking at. That's what the media's looking at, is what's in that 20,000. I mean...
Any statements to that effect? The agenda's been put forward a number of days ago, so...
Mr. Chairman, if, I would say if Karen and/or Helen is prepared to do that, make that presentation now, I don't see any reason why we wouldn't just hear it. I don't know that it...
Do you want to switch? Okay, not a problem for the Board? Okay, then, we'll switch, we'll switch over then to that, move that into the second part. So, we'll delay voting on Item Number One then, and we will now then go into Agenda Item Two, which is the 2016 Presidential Preference Election Issues. So, joining us today is Ms. Helen Purcell to lead us off into the discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
County Recorder, Helen Purcell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. As you've seen, that we have presented to you the official canvas, which I guess you will approve or not at some later time in the meeting. But if I might go through the presentation that we attempted to give at the legislature on Monday, some of the facts and figures. Now, even with the report that you have in front of you, that we've given to you, came from that presentation, some of the facts and figures have changed because as of 3:36 yesterday afternoon, we completed all of the account in this particular election. So, now we have final figures rather than approximate figures.
Okay.
For this election, we had 1,238,792 people that were eligible to vote. Of those, peal voters or the permanent early voters were 897,247, which is 72 percent of those eligible to vote in this election. The early ballots returned from this election was 533,772. Voters at the polls was 88,187. Provisional ballots cast at the polling places was 24,639. Of those, there were valid provisionals, 4,631. Provisionals which were attributed to independents at the polls was 18,322, and of course, those provisionals did not count. There were 11,493 early voters who had already received a ballot and went to the polling place. Because of the technology that we have at the polls, they were allowed to vote a regular ballot because we could tell immediately that their early ballot had not been returned to us. So, that number was 11,493. In previous elections, those people would have had to have been provisional voters. But in this election, because we knew they had not returned their early ballot, we were able to vote, they were able to vote at the polls using a regular ballot that was tabulated at the polling place. 168 early voters that were provisionals, because our record showed that they had already returned their early ballot, therefore had already voted, those provisionals, of course, were not counted because their early ballots had already been counted. There was a turnout, as we mentioned, as Karen mentioned earlier, of 621,976 voters. So, that is 50.21 percent of those eligible to vote in this election. Of those that returned their early ballots, there was 43.09 percent. And at the polls, we had 7.12 percent of people who were eligible for this election voted at the polls. Of the total people who were involved in this election, 86 percent of those people who voted either by ballot or at the polls, 86 percent were by mail and 14 percent were at the polls. If we might go into our reasoning for what we decided to do in this particular election and how we did the math and started processing, which of course, we started last spring. There were, there are a total of 1.9 million registered voters at that time. We are now over 2 million in Maricopa County. 750,000 of those are non-parties, so they would have not been eligible for this election. So, the total qualified again in specific numbers, 1,238,792. Of those qualified and did receive an early ballot, we rounded that at the time of 890,000. That figure was actually 897,247. What we determined after subtracting that, those possible voters at the polls would be, in actual numbers, 341,545. We estimated at the polls, based on historical data, particularly from 2008, that the turnout at the polls would be approximately 23 percent. The 23 percent of that would give us the 83,489 that we estimated would be going to the polls. And dividing that by what we determined might be a reasonable number of polling places would be 60, dividing that by the 60, would give us about 1,391 in each polling place. We rounded that up, figured in about 1,500 at a polling place. Looking at 2008, we had five to seven poll workers per site, two check-in lines, and paper rosters. Looking at 2016, we had 13 to 15 workers per site, four to five check-in lines on our e-poll books. Then we said, we could add one additional feature, and that would be using the vote center mentality, or as is used across the country, and even in some of our other counties in Arizona, have used vote centers for some time.
Thank you.
Let me digress a little. Our regular election, when we conduct our primary and general, we cannot use vote centers based on the current equipment that we have in Maricopa County. It will not read or let us access all of voters in Maricopa County to vote on a particular insight, since these are precinct-bound. So, we said, okay, if we had the 60 voting centers, which we felt would be able to take care of this, and additionally, we would allow people to vote at any one of those, because we only have three ballot styles. You have one office, and Republican, Democrat, and Green are your ballot styles. Going again across that, we have congressional districts. So, you have eight congressional districts and you can spread that out between those districts. We can still handle that. At a primary election, we had in excess of 4,000 ballot styles, and our current system will not allow us to do vote centers in that instance. But we thought this would give us ability to do that and allow people to go anywhere. In order to do that, we knew that we had to, that we had to have larger polling places, obviously. We wanted more poll workers there and there would be more people going to the polling places. So, that gave us an issue at times of finding available places that would be able to handle that. We knew that they, that the rooms had to be large, and of course, as always in all of our elections, it had to be ADA compliant and that there would be substantial parking. We know that using a school, for instance, which is in school on Tuesday, does not work very well, so we aimed at other facilities, community centers, a lot of churches, so that we could minimize the problem of not having a large enough space and having sufficient The next item in your packet that you have there is a map of the polling places. Shows the, I know it's kind of hard to read up there, but what you have before you, and it shows several polling places where there were issues of long lines on Election Day. Those particular places throughout the day and the evening, we sent additional people and equipment to try to minimize the issues that we saw out there. As I said, the new feature was the electronic poll books, which allows us to see a voter as they come in. They can give us their driver's license or their voter registration card. They can swipe that, either the driver's license or the card, and their name as a voter, if they are in fact a registered voter, automatically comes up on the, on the screen in front of the poll worker. They see that they are either eligible for this election or are not eligible. If they're eligible, they're given a ballot and they go and vote that ballot. If they are not eligible, or our records show they are not eligible, then they are given a, allowed to vote a provisional ballot. And if we think about that, provisional ballots are gonna take longer than the regular handing someone a ballot and they go to the ballot box. A provisional ballot, not only is there a form to fill out, but there's always conversation with the voter. I mean, the voter's gonna say, why do I have to vote provisional? They want details and what's gonna happen to that ballot. Is it gonna be counted or not? So, there is conversation that goes on with each voter. As I, I think I said earlier, 168 of those who voted a provisional ballot were people who had already voted an early ballot.
One second.
Yes, sir.
There's a quick question, and I think it's, I think it's pretty valid, that there's a lot of information, and at this, and at this area, we tend to ask questions and let people make presentations. So, as you're making a presentation, if a, if a question comes up from the Board, you guys can answer that as per usual.
Thank you.
Supervisor Chukri.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Ms. Purcell. And I just, before we got too far away from the polling places, I had one question, and I know it's come up before, as it relates to statute in the polling places, because it sounds as though there's some governance associated with, with that, the number, and how that's derived in statute. And do you mind sharing a little bit about that or explaining that a little bit too? Because I think that's appropriate.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Chukri, there is a ceiling provided in the statute. We are, for Presidential Preference Election, we are allowed to have no more than half of the precincts. There is no floor. And currently, we are working with one of the state senators to amend that legislation or to amend that section of the statute where there would be not only a ceiling, but also a floor for the two major counties.
But, Mr. Chairman, to that point, I think moving forward, one of the things I really would love to, over the summer, you know, all the dust clears, to really dive in, is as we move forward when establishing polling places, and this is statewide, is I really believe, whatever that formula is, or whatever that standard or test is, there should be some type of a test, a standard, to be able to select the polling places and take a step backwards and say, okay, you know, does this meet a certain criteria? And that's, I think, is something that's missing. I had a great discussion with our old friend, Mr. Bruce Adelson, and I asked Bruce, I said, help me understand how the Department of Justice would look and to say, to any map or any selection of polling place, if this is, you know, if there's problems or not, what measurements and tests did they use? And I do plan on working with Bruce, at least kind of getting an idea, because I do believe that moving forward, when you start looking at where polling places are going to be, you know, yes, we want to look at voter trend and voter history, we want to look at current voter registration numbers, but I think there's even more categories you can look at, you know, take a step back and say, okay, what are we missing here? You know, anything from transportation lines to, you know, whatever. I mean, there's, I think there's tests that, and I just don't know, this is, you know, I know there's people out there that understand this a lot better than I do, but there has to be a way to say, here's a standard, here's our test to decide that we have, one, we have enough polling places, and two, they're in the right locations. And that's what we're missing. I mean, I think the office is doing their best, you know, thinking, or at the time, you know, what's in the best, but I think to have another level of criteria, and that's something that I think the legislature needs to take up as well. It's not just, I really don't think there should be a cap, Helen, I really don't. I think, get rid of that cap. You know, I think, allow the county recorders to use their best judgment to determine if there should be more than, you know, let's say that the cap, I'm guessing 400, but if you all came in and say, hey, no, we need 500, you should have that opportunity. So, I understand the floor, but I think that having that cap where it's, you know, no more, I think that needs to go away. I don't know.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Gallardo, I think at the time, as you know, this statute was put in place a number of years ago, I believe it was 1992, when they put this in place. And we were looking at certainly different figures than we have today, but I think they were looking at, okay, you're gonna, probably, you're only gonna have your parties involved in this. And it is, and we heard this at the time, it is a rallying thing around a Presidential Preference. So, that's what they were looking at, and they said, you know, probably we can cut costs if we just, if you just have half or less than that. But I'm not saying that that's not, you know, something that the legislature should look at, if they want to also eliminate that ceiling, that's certainly up to them.
No, I, no, I think there's a lot we learned from Tuesday's election moving forward. I think there were some issues that popped up that a lot of us just never anticipated in terms of how we govern elections, and I think, I think moving forward, there's a lot of work that the legislature needs to look at, or at least have a dialogue, and this is one of them, is how do you determine polling places and what's that, what's that standard? I really believe there should be a standard. The Department of Justice has a standard. I'd be interested to know what that standard is. I mean, if they, they look at this, and they're gonna, you know, in the past, they would pre-clear it or not, but there was a test, there was a, there was a way for them to look to say, okay, this is, this is a good map, we have the polling places in the right area, we have the right amount of people, you know, assigned per polling places, and I think we should have that standard, not just Maricopa County, it's all 15 counties should abide by that same kind of...
Steve, I think your, I think your comments are on target, especially when you talk about, about moving forward. There's a lot of things that, however, are still in this presentation, so let's, let's try to get through this, because I think we're probably gonna be having some discussions and statements too. But let's go ahead and let you guys continue on.
I think we've already gone over kind of the next slide, which is talking about provisional ballots and how we kind of determine how much time is spent on those provisional ballots. So, you can certainly see that. We see, we see it as a minimum of five minutes per, but there could be much longer than that if the voter is trying to understand why they have to vote a provisional ballot. So, we certainly look at all of that. The next slide, and I, that's not as easy to see, it's also not easy for me to see, and if you don't mind, I'm gonna let Karen Osborne address that slide.
Mr. Chairman, this is the cost estimate. And when we talk about cost, in 2008, we were at $1.25 per voter by statute. The county was required to, thank you, the county received, the maximum reimbursement we could get was $1,927,000, and we spent $2,464,000. We had to assume $536,000 that we did not get reimbursed for. That was in 2008. In 2012, we were given the full max amount because there was no Democratic Party Presidential Preference. In 2016, if you multiply the $1.25 times the 1,958,000 people, you get $2,447,613.75, not to put a fine point on it. But it, we know, in our rounding of what we know it's gonna cost us, at least $2,800,000. And so, we're gonna be in the hole, 422,000, if the bill does not go through or the appropriation... the appropriation does not go through. We ask this board for $4 million to front the cost, as we always do. We have to pay those polling place workers, we have to pay for the polling places, we have to pay for the ballots. But we only get reimbursed currently at the $1.25, which would put us again at 422,000 in the hole.
And, Mr. Chairman, this is, this is one area that I think, as, as a county supervisor, we need to go to the legislature and say, hey, we need you guys to, to, to invest in elections. It's really easy to have a public hearing and point the finger at everyone. It's, it's much different when, when they won't point the finger at themselves. They're, they're to blame here, and the legislature needs to take responsibility and fund these elections. I mean, when it comes to making sure we have enough resources in order to conduct a full-blown elections, to make sure we have enough resources for, for voter education, I can tell you, I've been there at the legislature, I even introduced a bill dealing with voter education and making sure funding goes to it, but they haven't spent any money on voter education. They spend not a nickel, and they got to. They, we got to look at, how do we conduct elections in the state of Arizona? How do we make sure there's enough money and resources to, to conduct the election? How do we make sure we have the technology that is needed to conduct these elections? Technology is changing all the time. So I, I think there's some blame there on the legislative side. Like I said, it's easy to have a public hearing to point the finger at everybody, but at the same time, they need to point the finger at themselves, particularly in this area.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, to that point, Supervisor Gallardo, there were some monies spent, sort of public monies, because Clean Elections spent about 200,000 in ads prior to the election talking about the independent voter, so there was some there. We, of course, do our normal that we do with press releases and that type of thing. We try, we advised the board last December, I believe it was, that there was not sufficient funding for this election, and didn't know at that time. We had been promised that there would be a bill introduced that would pay us, all of the counties for this election, because all of them are, all the counties are short. So we, and that bill has gone through the two houses, I believe, and it is sitting, I believe, in the Senate waiting for third read.
And, and, Mr. Chairman, Helen, just, I'm not sure if you're, if you're familiar with it, but in 2013 or 14, and regardless of how we feel on the Clean Elections process, there was the, there was a bill that was passed and signed with the governor that actually cut the education funding for Clean Elections. And it just drives me crazy when you have lawmakers saying, oh, you're not doing enough on, on education, when they've cut funding on, on, on education of voters, and they did it in, I want to say 13 or 14, I have to look back, where they actually cut the funding for, for, for Clean Elections. So, so yes, I think the state needs to do more in terms of how we educate our voters and making sure that people understand how, how the process works and how to go about it, so.
And, Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Gallardo, we have joined with Clean Elections on several elections in the past to try to maximize what they are doing in, in the area and what we can do to supplement that.
Okay, very good. Continue on.
Let's talk about some of the myths, which are around an election. The first big myth in this particular type of election is independents could vote. That was advocated, I guess, by a number of people in state, at the state level, on national television, that independents could vote. So we had some work to do there to try to let everybody know, no independents cannot vote in this election. Independents could change their party from either Republican, Democrat, or Green after February 22nd, 2016, and vote in the Presidential preference. That is not the case. They had to change by February 22nd in order to be eligible to vote in this election. Voters could change their parties after February 22nd and expect a new party ballot on Election Day. That's not the case. They had to do that on election, I mean, on the 22nd. Voters could vote again if their candidate was no longer in the race. That's been talked about by a lot of people. I've had, well, I know it's every player, but I've had personally, people said, I've already voted and my candidate's out. Sorry about that. We, they can't vote again. As I told you, there was 163 people who voted provisional, that they had already gotten an early ballot, and know their, their ballot did not count because they had already voted. E-poll books on Election Day had connectivity issues, and this is not true. There were not any connectivity issues with any of the e-poll books on Election Day, and we've gone back and checked that any number of times. Vote Centers ran out of ballots. That is also a myth. They did not run out of all the ballots. They could have gotten a ballot from another congressional districts. We gave ballots or asked them to interchange ballots, but there is always a failsafe at every polling place. Every polling place has a touchscreen voting system, which they can use, and it has all the ballot styles, contains everything across, across the valley. That has to be by law in every polling place, and was in this instance. Voters were not allowed to vote if they were not inside the building at 7:00 p.m. Not true. As you all saw, the lines went well after 7:00 o'clock. The marshal goes to the end of the line, and anybody standing in that line at 7:00 o'clock will be allowed to vote. And some of our polling places did not close until early the next morning. After early results were released, no more ballots are counted. That is also not true. At 8:00, we release the early returns, and then we start releasing the returns from the polling places as they come in. I was kind of surprised when some of the polling places started coming in within 30, 35 minutes after the early ballots were dispensed. But that is always the case. We have had this conversation, not only locally, we've had this conversation nationally, as to whether or not elections should be called when you have still voters in line. If any of you will recall, the 2000 election in Florida, when part of Florida was in time, one time zone, and part of Florida was in another time zone. In the Panhandle, people were still voting, Panhandle of Florida, still voting, when the election was called. So that's been something that's been discussed nationally, and I'm sure will be in the future. Provisional ballots are not counted. That is not, also not true. Provisional ballots are counted if they can be counted. If you were eligible for that election, your provisional ballot will be counted. Otherwise, as we saw with the independents and others who were just not registered at all, those ballots will not be counted. DOJ procedures no longer apply when, with removal of preclearance, and I don't believe that's the case. No, we did not submit our polling places to DOJ, as we have done in the past, but all of the other factors of the DOJ requirements, we still do, we still have, and in particular in this election, we had 299 bilingual board workers at the polls on Election Day. We look at the same criteria that we did when the Justice Department had oversight. We look, they have given us a profile of the Hispanic surnames. We match those against our file to see where we should have bilingual board workers, and we do that. We have special training for the bilingual board workers. So as I said, in this election, we had 299. Polling places must be ADA compliant. That is true of any polling place at any time. We still do that. So there are a number of things that we had to submit to the Justice Department, that of course, we still do in every election. Primary and general elections will be at vote centers. Our primary and general elections will not be at vote centers. At the primary in August and the general election in November, we will have 724 precincts. Each of those will have a polling place, either in that particular precinct, or if there is no location there, they can be co-located with the precinct next to them, so that it is still convenient. So 724 will be available in both the primary and the general election. The vote center's decisions were racially motivated to hinder Democrat voters, and I'm going to turn this over to the Democrat, if you don't mind.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, absolutely not. And I want to reiterate that the same criterias that we used for DOJ when we used to have to submit is, with the exception of submitting these addresses for the vote centers, is the same thing that we use. Those precincts were approved by DOJ. The, when we go back to the August and November elections, we still have the three, 299, we have 299 Spanish language speakers, but we also went in where we cannot consolidate on tribal land. We have three places. One is in the center of Hila Bend called San Lucy. One is in the Hickewaun precinct. It is the Kaka Village to extreme south. And then in Fort McDowell. I had one of the reporters call and say, so how far is it from Hila Bend? Well, it's two hours and 18 minutes going one way, and it's three hours the other. There are 44 people registered in the Kaka Village, and they turned out with a 50%, and I was very proud of them. But we do send the, the language where it needs to be. We did not, when we looked at that map, we looked at Maricopa County, and we thought, where are the, the places where we have, have people? Where, where can we get them to come to? Because if you think back, this tremendous amount of people, 890,000, we're going to get them by mail. And we had over 700,000 that were not eligible because they were not in the Democrat, or Republican, or Libertarian parties. So we started, I'm sorry, Green, yes. The Libertarians couldn't vote either. But as we started, we looked at trying to find logic. Where can we go? Where is there a big enough facility that we can, can use that? Where do they have parking? There was nothing, absolutely nothing, about trying to do this on any way to decrease the vote turnout of any group, any registration. It just simply wasn't.
Wait, wait, wait one second. Prior to your question, I had a quick, a quick question. Under, under the DOJ preclearance, so presidential preference elections also fell under DOJ preclearance for a number of years as well? I mean, I'd never kept track of that, so that is true? That was under that?
Mr. Chairman, they did.
Any election that we conducted fell under that?
Any election conducted.
Any election we conducted, any process, Mr. Chairman, anything that we did fell under that. And that is where we were required to translate into the Spanish language, and the native language that we have here in, in Maricopa County are not written. So we have had that as a spoken language.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Steve.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, Helen, Karen, I, I've read the letters submitted by both Mayor Stanton and one of our council members out in Avondale, and, you know, I brought up a red flag. I haven't, I haven't looked at it, but I, there are people looking at census numbers and, and, and C-VAP numbers and see, you know. Was there any truth to, to Mr. or Mayor Stanton's letter? I don't know if you saw it, I don't know if he had any thoughts or comments on it in terms of his complaint.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Gallardo, I have not seen the complaint, but I can tell you, I did not intentionally leave out any racial minority. I did not leave out any group of, of registered voters. I did not try to suppress the vote in any way, shape, or form.
What, help me understand, you're looking at, at the, all the pre, all the 60 or so polling places, it looked like there was eight of them, then, I think eight, that were, had long lines. Why, how, how, why those eight? I mean, what, what is it about those eight that had the huge line? And one of the, and one in particular was in the Maryvale area, and, and that was one that I had concerns with, because there was nothing in South Glendale, which is predominantly Latino as well. So how, what about those eight? Why, why those eight? Why not the others?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Gallardo, when, if you look forensically back at this, what we have are a tremendous amount of provisional ballots, and as Ms. Purcell said, it doesn't take the normal 35, 45 seconds to check someone in. It takes, we've, we've had about 2,000 hours of provisional interaction with these folks because they don't think that they are an independent. When you, when you look at that, I had the question yesterday of, so why would all these people think that they are a Democrat? The Democratic Party that I'm a member of has not had to have a show of proof that you're a Democrat since 2008, in January, when the cutoff was for that Presidential preference. And if you go down through eight at the, the jurisdictionals, eight at the primary, if you, we send out a 90-day card, and if you're an independent, you want a Democrat ballot, we send it to you. The general election, we all get the same ballot. So you go down through nine, 10, 11, 12, we didn't have a Presidential preference. 13, 14, 15. And now is the first time in all of those years that you have had to be a Democrat to get a Democrat ballot. So I don't fault them, we don't fault them at all. We just know that they, they have not reregistered since then. We know that they thought they were always voting Democrat, but they were in fact independent. The one thing I would like to do is I have a, have a sheet here, that if anybody in the audience was required to vote a provisional ballot because they were independent, because they were independent, if they will give me their name, their address, their zip code, I need their date of birth for similar names, and their telephone number, I will look them up and we will call them, if they are uncomfortable as to why they believe they are not independent. That is extraordinary to anything we've ever done, but I'm willing to do it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And, Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Gallardo, we, if you look at the numbers, and we can certainly show you that, we don't have those numbers, I don't have them right here, at the numbers of the people who voted at each one of those places, and the number of provisionals that each one of those places had, we'll be happy to share that with you.
Compared to the, oh, I'm sorry, compared to the other polling places that did not have long lines.
We have the whole list, so you can look at the whole list.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Gallardo, the 531 is what provisionals that we had at that particular one.
Which is, as I understand, is less than what we had at the Beatitudes in North Central Phoenix.
And, Mr. Chairman, Helen, Karen, just a couple of things on, 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 on the myth. One is an email from an actual board worker at the, I believe it was a polling place on Seventh Avenue in Glendale, the Church of the Beatitudes. I'll, I'm going to hand this to you, but she did, in her email, this is a board worker, in her email, she called my office, I said, put in writing, send it to me in an email, tell me what happened. She, she, she sent this to us on, on yesterday, where she is stating specifically that they did run out of ballots. I don't know, this is an actual board worker, so I'd ask to take a look at it.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Gallardo, we will certainly look at that.
Okay. And because this is a board worker, this isn't a voter, it was someone who was there, hired by the county to operate the board, so I'd ask if we look at that. A couple of things, just moving forward, I think working with the legislature for future PP&amp;E, you just got to delete the prohibition on, on independents participating. It is wrong. I have introduced this bill so many times in the legislature, and, and unfortunately, it's fallen on deaf ears. I would hope that the same Elections Committee that held their, their hearing on, on Monday would, would, would push this bill through. It's unfair that we have independents paying for an election and not allowing them to participate. That has to be changed for future PP&amp;E. I think moving forward as well, I think the, the 8:00 p.m., this is something I was looking at last night in statute, kind of reading what the statute was, took me forever to find it in the statutes, but I found it, and I think that has to be looked at. I think, you know, there are some cases in where the, whoever, the officers in charge of the election, should make that determination as an elected official, if we should postpone releasing the results. Now, I understand you got to balance with the media's concerns and candidates' concerns, and, and the concerns of the voters, but be honest, I'm more concerned with the voters. For, for anyone to be in line as long as they have, and, and I was at the Seventh Avenue in Glendale, and to be there at 8:00, where these voters have stood in line for a very long time, and then to find out on their, on their smartphones that, you know, they have announced the, the projected winners of the, of the election, which is unfair. That 8:00 p.m. thing needs to be changed. Again, it goes back to the legislature, the legislature needs to look at this. They need to change this, or, or come up with some type of modification. I'm willing to work with, with the Elections Committee in the House to come up with language to, to take care of this issue, but that needs to be... to, to take care of this issue, but that needs to be changed. I think moving forward on the DOJ issues, I think we need to look, when looking at polling places and, not polling places, more of the, the vote centers or even polling places, I think we need to look at census numbers. I think we need to look at CVAP numbers, just make sure that, that we don't have, you know, too many voters, particularly in, in, in minority areas allocated to one part, one polling place or poll, or vote center. I think that needs to be looked, I also, I'm a strong believer in community input. We got to get those, those suggestions. Let it be polling places or any type of, of election changes, particularly those in the Elections Procedures Manual, any changes, you know, we got to get community input. What do you, what do we think, you know? Is this good, bad? You know, I'm, I'm a strong advocate of getting people involved and getting input. I'm a strong supporter of the vote centers, I really am. I think we eliminate the issue of people going to the wrong polling place, but I think we need to do to, to educate the voters, and again, that goes back to legislature, giving enough dollars in order to educate the voters. You know, relying on social media or just relying on, on, you know, free media, it's not enough. I think the legislature, once again, needs to step up and give enough resources to all 15 counties to make sure that they are promoting the, the election information. And there was one other issue in, oh, going to the e-poll books. I guess more, more so the entire plan, I guess, on Election Day, is what, what type of contingency plan, because I think every county should have a contingency plan. Let it be what happened on Election Day on the 22nd, or, you know, if a polling place or poll center catches on fire, you know, what is that contingency plan and how is it implemented? If there's a technology problem, if the e-poll books, for whatever reason, go down, you know, what is that plan where we don't have voters standing in line? And that's something that all 15 counties should be able to have, that's something that they should make public, so the, the public knows exactly what that contingency plan was. My office started getting calls on Election Day at 10:00 AM. I went out there and I saw, I mean, Tolleson is a perfect example, Tolleson Polling Place had a line. This is midday and there's like 100 people. I knew at that point, we have a problem. Yeah. And I instructed my chief that, find out what this contingency plan is. So I think there, I'm sure there is one, but there has to be, I think all 15 counties need to have a large contingency plan.
Hey Steve, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
But a lot of this is statements, I don't, I've kind of lost track of if there's any questions in there or statements, but is there, is, is there a specific thing that you guys want to discuss, what Supervisor Gallardo has brought up? Because we're going to be here in the speaker's house.
But, but, Mr. Chairman, I think there's a lot of problems that occurred on, on Election Day.
Yes.
That fall in the lap of the state legislature. They need to step up to the plate and deal with some of these issues. And some are old issues that, that we've been hashing out for many of years that have never been addressed, some are new issues, but I think it's important for us as we go through and identify even let, let it be the myths or, or what had happened. But we identify these issues and, and not lose focus that the legislature needs to do their part. And, but going back to the contingency plan for future elections.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, if I might, Mr. Gallardo, if, if I could, I, I think there's, there's a good way for us to bring all this home. However, I would just suggest two things. First, a lot of what was just said, I agree, it is the state legislature, not the County Elections Department, that can make a decision on whether or not independents can vote. And secondly, I think that many of my colleagues, including myself, have thoughts, ideas that we would like to share with both Ms. Osborne and Ms. Purcell, but perhaps we should hear from some of the public that's here. I think we have 20 or so people wanting to speak, Mr. Chairman, and we can come back to looking forward, Mr. Gallardo, because I agree with you, I think we, we need to look at that, but, but it might be better time spent to hear from, from the folks here to speak and then ask to come back and have the two ladies come back.
And, and after that, I, I think we, we still need to dive into the provisional ballots. I think those are, there's a lot of interest in that area.
Well, okay. If you want, well, let's just wait on that one for a second, because, you know, there's speakers here, I'm going to blame something on the city of Phoenix, their parking fees are outrageous. So I don't want, some of the speakers here are paying for fees to be here today, so I want to get on with the, the speaker portion, if you, if you ladies would like to have a seat. Before, before I did, some of you here in the audience are new to this format and new to county issues and, and I, again, want to thank you for joining us. I'm going to, we're going to give a, a quick film discussing the rules going forward during the speaking process.
Or who directs or incites others to be disruptive will be removed from the meeting. In the event a person engaging in disruptive behavior refuses to leave the meeting room, law enforcement officials may take any necessary steps within their discretion in accordance with Arizona law, including but not limited to disorderly conduct, criminal trespass, and/or obstructing government operations. No weapons, no signs made from materials that may cause injury are permitted in the meeting room. If you wish to address the Board of Supervisors on an item listed on the agenda or at the call to the public, you will need to complete a speaker slip and turn it in to the clerk of the board. Your name will be called at the appropriate time. Please note the additional instructions on the back of the speaker form for your reference. Esta es una junta pública de la Mesa Directiva de Supervisores del Condado Maricopa. A cualquier miembro del público se le permite asistir y escuchar. Cualquier persona que sea desordenada o quien dirija o provoque a otros a ser desordenados será sacado de la junta. En el evento que una persona envuelta en conducta desordenada se niegue a salir de la junta, oficiales de la ley pueden tomar cualquier medida necesaria dentro de su discreción de acuerdo con las leyes de Arizona, incluyendo pero no limitando a desorden público, entrada ilegal directiva o sea criminal, y, o impidiendo las operaciones del gobierno. Ningún arma, ningún letrero o cartelón hecho de materiales que pueden causar daño o lesión son permitidos en la sala para juntas. Si usted desea dirigirse a la Mesa Directiva de Supervisores sobre un punto o artículo en la lista de agenda o a la llamada al público, necesitará completar un formulario y entregarlo al funcionario de la junta, reconocido en inglés como Clerk of the Board. Su nombre será llamado en el momento apropiado. Por favor tome nota de las instrucciones adicionales en la parte de atrás del formulario para su preferencia. This is a public meeting.
All right. Thank you, thank you for the time to, to watch that. Fran, would you like to have anything else said about our rules going forward today? And in Spanish, Gallardo?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board and members of the audience, we did have speaker slips available in the front. They're kind of a salmon peach color. If you missed that when you came in and you're wishing to address the board, I think they can still fill out a slip and we can give them to the chairman. Those that have been received, you have a number, and I believe we have approximately nine that have been turned in, but since we have just that number, I think we will move fairly quickly. But if you are signed up to speak, if numbers one through five would like to just come over to this side and be ready to speak at the podium, we do have a timer here and a reminder bell will ring approximately 15 seconds before the end of your two-minute time. And then there is a final bell that rings. And in order to be able to hear all of the speakers, if you would be respectful of that time, it would be very helpful.
Are we allowed to address them?
They are addressing agenda items, yes.
Okay. Okay. Number one, we have, thank you for joining us today. Mr. Brent Kleiman is here to speak to, to our board. Welcome Brent, thanks for being here today.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, I've been watching this for the last week and have listened to the presentation and seen the best I can off the video monitors. And I have a couple of questions probably for Ms. Purcell and the Elections Director more than the board, but looking at the numbers of 2008, there being a shortage of $500,000 in the $1.25 repayment policy of the state. In 2012, it was said they received the maximum amount, which I'm assuming was from the number of eligible voters, independents, Democrats, Republicans. So that would have presented a surplus to the county which isn't being described. So then again, in 2016, had we held that surplus, is the $400,000 shortage that was potential really caused for the severe cut down to 60 polling centers? I'm going to try and do this quickly also. Then my other question is, the statute says no less than 20 days prior to the election, the county may add polling places. Ms. Purcell has stated that it was too late to find out that there was so much excitement in this election that they could not add polling places. I think it was fairly clear a month out that we needed more polling places, that could have been done. There was definitely, the question is, when you're doing your math, if all the polling places were split geographically around the county, the polling places had to run at an efficiency of two people per minute for all 13 hours they were open. That's near impossible with the provisional average of five minutes per person. So there, there should be no requirement from the state that we have a floor level of polling places? A ceiling's fine. If the county recorder can't do their job to say we need more than 60 places, then we have a definite issue.
Thank you, Mr. Kleiman. And I've seen that, please do not have any outbursts. We need to get through this. All the questions will be answered. So I'm going to, I'm going to, I saw them writing questions. We'll answer the questions after everybody, all 10 have had a chance to come up to speak. So thank you, Mr. Kleiman. No, no outbursts, please. Number, uh, number two, Mr. James Arton, I hope, James?
Yes.
Nice seeing you today.
Thanks. Thank you. I wanted to, I just want to point out three, three things that I think would be good for when folks come back up to address. One thing I wanted to talk about, the e-poll books. It's nice to see that the e-poll books are preventing people from having to vote provisionals with the early ballots, but I really do think we need to investigate and make sure that we understand any kind of delays that were associated with e-poll books. I was kind of concerned to hear it described as a myth that we had no connectivity problems because, you know, I have a couple of poll workers that have told me that they had, they saw that, and so it just, it concerns me to hear so early into the process, I feel like we've totally cleared that. The other thing I wanted to say is that running out of ballots for a particular congressional district is running out of ballots. The, the party is required by law to tabulate in accordance with a congressional district, and if you're giving someone the wrong congressional district ballot, that's, that's a problem. So I think, I feel like we need to go back and look at things a little bit more detailed there. The other thing is, I do think we need to distinguish between no party preference or no, no party selected and independent. The reason for that is, when I select independent, I've done something to say I want to be independent. If I have no party preference, we really need to dig in and see, is MVD just taking an empty box and assuming no party preference when a person had previously selected? So I think that we need to parse out the difference between those two. The last thing I want to say about the selection of the polling places, we, we heard today that it was not intentional to disenfranchise someone, obviously not. I would never say, I know these two public servants and they certainly would never do anything to disenfranchise someone, but the test is, did we take active steps to ensure that this change was not retrogressive? Did we take active steps to ensure that no one was disenfranchised? And I think that's the test that we need to apply, not just to the, the language, which is fantastic, but also to the location of the polling places.
Thank you, Mr. Barton. Okay. It is Barton, right? Did I get it right? Thank you. All right. Mr. Leonard Clark is with us today. Thank you, Leonard, for being here.
Hi there. Thank you for letting me speak. My name is Leonard Clark, born right down the street at Good Samaritan Hospital, lifelong resident. Yes, I do believe, and I thank you for having this meeting on the canvas, I do believe that there is blame to go around, but the blame that I've seen, I sat through all of the hearings at the legislature and I'm hearing some nice people speak now telling us why they believe we had these problems, but in, you know, looking back at the whole record of mistakes and mishaps and things that we've had, I mean, I would be generous if I thought that they were just accidental, but even if I am generous and say that all these things weren't about voter suppression, which, I'm sorry, but I do believe they were, this is just, these are egregious mistakes. This has caused many of the young people I know and older people I know to lose faith in our democratic system. And that really breaks my heart because, you know, I served in the armed forces, like many of you have done, many are watching this live right now, all over Arizona, and they're wondering whether they should even vote anymore. It's that serious. And I don't want to see this beautiful democratic system that we have slowly be destroyed because people don't think their vote counts anymore. I mean, what I saw that day still breaks my heart. My beautiful, our beautiful state of Arizona, people not having enough water to drink, five, six hours in lines. I don't like to say that I want a public official or public officials to resign, but I would not be doing my ethical and conscientious duty as a human being if I remain silent on that. And I, I do have to ask you, please call for the resignations of Maricopa County Board, or Maricopa County Recorder Helen Purcell and Maricopa County Elections Officer Karen Osborne. 30 years is a long time. Thank you.
Please do not clap. Thank you very much for joining us today, Mr. Clark. Next up, Ms. Patricia Jason. Thank you for being here, Patricia.
Thank you, and good morning, Chairman and members of the board. I'm 71 years old. I've been living in Arizona as a registered voter since 1971. I'm just a citizen, I don't represent any other groups. Also, I've been a poll worker twice in two different elections, including the provisional desk. But I am outraged and once again embarrassed by Arizona. How is it that a county of over a million voters, that you folks could conceive that 60 polling locations would be adequate? If I recall, you guys unanimously approve that, and you should be ashamed of yourselves. I hear that money is an issue. Are we so poor? Is Maricopa County that poor? Or is this situation, along with all of the other legislation that has been passed here in Arizona in the last recent years, another tactic to impede minority voters and to impede democracy? I'm sorry, but I firmly believe it. I've seen more and more steps taken to limit voter access, and that is a crime, a crime against our democracy. I would like to know, these hearings, both here and in the state, are just chewing gum for the eyeballs and the ears. I would like to know exactly how you plan to fix this, and I would like to know how many polling places you plan to put in, in November. This is a highly contentious election, and you know you're going to have a huge turnout.
Ma'am, you're addressing the board.
And thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. And thank you for your services as, working as, as a poll worker. We appreciate it very much.
I love it. I believe in a vote.
Thank you.
Let's make it available.
Thank you for being with us today. Thank you. Okay. Number five, Ms. Diane Barker. Good morning, Diane.
And while she's coming, if six through 10 could also line up over here and be ready?
Yeah, thank you Supervisor Hickman and Board of Supervisors, and I'm in District 7. My name's Diane Barker. I'm a qualified voter, and I'm here to protect and preserve that right. For me, I always, if you look at my record, I always vote, and I always vote on Election Day, and I want to preserve Election Day. And to my Board of Supervisor, this isn't a hiccup like what is alleged with light rail misspending of money, nor will it blow over, as I understood you thought, this summer. This is serious, and if you look at all the testimony, which I did Monday at the Legislature and in the media, they have listed media, they have listed responsible parties. They've named you too, because you went from 400 to the suggestion from the recorder to 60 in the most populated county in Arizona and one of the United States. We need to have you answer why. And we didn't hear an apology from you. The recorder has apologized. But the other thing, the county has a human resources campus, access to a lot of water. It was high temperatures that day. The recorder said at the testimony, "My heart sank." Because I carry water in the summer and I've helped people that are down on the sidewalk. The thing is, they said, "Did you send out water?" No. People were standing there. They told stories about getting wet. People could have lost their balance by being suddenly struck and they could, it's a safety issue. This is more, you, we're at the top of the organization chart. We citizens that are the voters that put you in, you owe us an allegiance. You must have it safe. You must have access. And we have to have training and media information when you're an independent. I changed mine to the party and voted, but a lot of people didn't. You accepted money from the state for all of those independents and then said, "Come on and vote." And it took 11 steps and way much time.
Diane.
This excess has to stop.
Thank you for being here, Diane. I appreciate your comments. Samantha Pastras? Was that close?
Yeah. Thank you Chairman Hickman and County Supervisors. Thank you very much for having this meeting today. My name's Samantha Pastras and I'm the Executive Director of the Arizona Advocacy Network. And we are working in a coalition with the Lawyers Committee for Civil Rights, Promise Arizona, and One Arizona. And we are looking into the county's compliance with the federal civil rights law. We are very concerned about how the polling locations were decided, especially in light of Maricopa County's socioeconomic status and the barriers that many individuals in Maricopa County face to voting. We have received countless stories of people who were not able to vote because they did not have reasonable access to voting. Arizona is a state that was formally covered by Section 5 preclearance provision of the Voting Rights Act before it was gutted in 2013. The barriers and long waits that our voters faced was inexcusable. The Arizona Advocacy Network is devoted to ensuring that all eligible voters in our state will not be disenfranchised from exercising their right to cast a ballot for the person of their choosing. Today, our coalition will submit letters to County Recorder Purcell and Secretary of State Reagan, asking them to explain how the polling places were decided. We heard a little bit today, but I'm still a little bit confused on exactly how they decided where on the map to have the polling locations. And we are going to be asking for very clear steps, very clear follow-up, to ensure that this doesn't happen again. And it sounds like that is happening, which we appreciate. But again, we are, we are very concerned and we cannot let this happen again. Thank you.
Thank you for being here, Samantha. Okay. Next up, Mr. Chris Sauter?
Sauter.
Sauter. Oh. Thank you for being here.
My name's Chris Sauter. Good morning. I represent the Bernie Sanders for President campaign. As background, I've been involved in disputed and problematic elections for over three I would say that there's a lot that I could rebut on behalf of the campaign that was presented this morning as to how it was handled, but I want to focus on provisional ballots. The Sanders campaign received dozens of calls on Election Day and thereafter with problems. We've gone through all of these complaints and we would put them into three types. The first type was a type referenced by Ms. Osborne. People who reasonably believed that they were Democrats, were a Democrat, that's why all of our complaints are from Democrats, reasonably believed they were Democrats because historically they had always voted that way. They were allowed to vote that way, even if they were registered technically as an independent or non-affiliated. Secondly, there are people who had proof that they were Democrats and they were required to vote by provisional ballot. We have an affidavit from one individual along with an email confirmation that he had changed his registration on February 17th. Before the deadline, he was required to vote by provisional ballot. And there are others who have proof or we have looked on the van and they were required to vote by provisional ballot, yet they were Democrats. And finally, there's the category referenced by Secretary of State on Monday. People who believe that they were Democrats, they registered as Democrats, somehow their votes, their registration was changed, not initiated by them. And you recall, the Secretary of State said she believed that happened because one of her staffers. So our request on behalf of the campaign is that you hold the canvas open until there's a thorough audit of all individuals who fall into that third category.
Okay, Mr. Sauter. Thank you for being here from Washington DC today. Thank you very much. Next up, Ms. Chanel Poe.
Yes, thank you so much, Chairman Hickman and members of the board. I'm here to discuss, you know, the voting fiasco. Believe that there were some leading indicators that there was gonna be a high voter turnout. There were over 800, 800,000 mail-in ballots that were sent to homes. And quite frankly, our communities are richly diverse and we cannot continue to implement mediocre plans that, through a single lens, that disenfranchises the vote. I'm curious to know why Pima had twice as many polling locations than Maricopa County. Quite frankly, we put our trust and our faith into our elected officials and leading from here, leading on up to the Governor's Office and the County Recorder's Office. There are a lot of people who've taken time off of work. There were individuals from our ADA community, our senior citizens, low-income families, even parents who wanted to take their children to experience democracy with them. And Arizona as a state has felt them across the board. We put, we think about, when we talk about solutions, let's go forward and try to work together with the different agencies as a collective and sit down and actually communicate with one another by making bus or transportation free during election days, by having many multiple days available for individuals to vote in the election. I hear that there's a narrative that's brewing that's talking about fiscal responsibility are being frugal. Let's have a breakdown of the costs and then ask ourselves, how important is democracy? How important is elections? And what are we gonna do to make sure that this doesn't happen in less than 45 days from May 17? Voters deserve to have information. Individuals deserve to be reached out to. Work with the school districts, work with us all. But we want to maximize this opportunity so that Arizonans can have their voices heard. Thank you.
Thank you, Chanel. Thank you very much for being here today. Next up is Francesca Garza.
Hello.
Good morning.
Good morning. Hi Chairman. And may I address everyone here. My name is Frankie Garza. I have, by the way, who I am. I actually do a lot of work in the community, here in the Phoenix community, Glendale community. I'm a motivational speaker. I go to schools, I go to prisons, I go to churches on my own time to volunteer to talk to the youth today. So I'm also working on my double major and a minor in English and actually fight for the people, fight and work for the people unlike some. But anyway, sir, I'm very upset. I'm here today to represent the people that weren't able to come. My brothers and sisters were upset. I did an early ballot. I made sure it was counted in the system. Who knows if it was counted? I mean, there's a lot of issues going on. My husband, he works 12-hour days. He went to a polling site and like we remembered in 2008 and 2012 to vote, it took 10 to 15 minutes tops. And we all are aware of the numbers. We don't have to do math because my five-year-old can figure out there would be an issue if there was 200 polling places down to 60, that there would be an issue. So my husband and my mother went to a polling site on Seventh Avenue, Seventh Avenue in Glendale and unable to vote because of the long lines. What are we doing? You know? It's blatantly right here in front of us, what is going on? You can see the corruption. You can see what's happening and you can see who got paid. So as I am just here to, what are we doing? What are we doing? What are we doing to go forward? Open the canvas, leave it open, fight for the people. That's what you're here to do. And if that was your dream to be up here to fight for the people and as her as well, do your job or otherwise resign. So thank you.
Thank you for being here today. Okay. Next up is Catherine Adams. Hope I have that right?
Actually, it's Catherine McAdams Diaz.
Oh, Mick Adams. Sorry Catherine. Thanks for being here today.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I didn't get to make my statement the other day and I had gone to the trouble of writing it out, so I'm just going to read it to you if I might.
Sure.
Okay. My name's Kathy McAdams Diaz and I'm here to make a statement regarding the presidential preference election that occurred March 22nd, 2016. I'm a recent transplant here from California and it has been quite a culture shock for me moving here to Arizona. I'm a licensed social worker with two master's degrees and many years of experience. I respectfully submit to Governor Ducey, Secretary of State Reagan, and County Recorder Purcell and this board that it is clear many citizens in Arizona were disenfranchised on March 22nd regardless of their party affiliation, thereby preventing them from exercising their constitutional right to vote. I was on the ground in East Valley, I was working for one of the campaigns, canvassing and checking on people and conditions at the polls. Several, and this is in East Valley where I live, several people verbalized to me as I walked door to door that they could not vote due to long lines. These were primarily elderly adults, disabled persons, or women with small children. I witnessed long lines of people wrapped around the polling sites. People with small children, elderly persons with walkers, and disabled people in wheelchairs as well as other people, standing in the hot sun for hours so they could exercise their constitutional right to vote. I submit to you, Governor Ducey, that this was a total disgrace and absolutely the responsibility lies with you since you signed the legislation to reduce the polling places from 200 to 60 against the advice of county election officials.
Ms. McAdams, want to make one other point?
Okay. Well, like I said, it was, okay, one other point.
Sure.
I would like to point out that our Latino brothers and sisters were disproportionately affected because entire communities lacked a single polling location. I had the opportunity to meet the former county recorder while I was at the polling location.
Okay.
And I asked him what he said. And he stated to me, plain and simple, this is voter suppression.
Okay Catherine, thank you very much for being here. Thanks for joining us today. I'm missing a speaker slip. I have number 12, but I don't have a number 11. Was there a number 11 that's floating around?
It's listening.
That was you? Okay. Because you're listed as number 10 for me. So I'm glad I got you. We'll go with the number 12. Mr. Ed Higgins is here today. Thanks for joining us, Ed. This is, this is the final speaker slip that has been turned in, so you will be the final speaker today on this topic.
Thank you Chairman. Thank you members. I went to go vote on Tuesday at the Tempe substation. I'm a Tempe resident. When I got there, there was an hour and a half wait, which is fine. This is my Super Bowl. I'm a geek and I love politics. So I went there to go enjoy the event. When I got into the, to be scanned, the person that was running the e-poll book didn't quite understand how to use it or was flustered because I kept on coming up as Republican. I had my voter ID card. I had my ID. The voter ID card said I was, I was good. She kept on checking it. It wouldn't go through. Kept on saying Republican. So they gave me a provisional ballot, which is okay. I can fill out one line and come back. When I came back to put the provisional ballot in the envelope, the person who was putting the pink slip on the envelope filled it out for me, but said she didn't have to put the pink slip on the envelope. This confused me, but I'm a patient person. I couldn't understand why or how you would know who I was if you didn't stick my name on the provisional ballot. The poll worker next door was visibly frustrated, grabbed the envelope and said, "Well, there's no way that we would know who that is voting, so we're gonna go ahead and put that on there." They stuck it on. As I was leaving, I noticed a gentleman getting visibly upset. I overheard him say, "I've been a Democrat for eight years and you are pulling me up as a Republican now. This is absurd." I turned to him. I was frustrated. I turned to him, I said, "Report it." As I went to my car, I was frustrated. It takes a lot for me to get frustrated. I was, I was fuming. I made a video. That video now has 130,000 views because I expressed my frustration at the whole event. But I went on. So I went to go phone bank that day. I met a nice lady named Gail. She was 82 years old. She could not stand in line, so I brought her to the polling place on Fillmore and Third to let her vote. I had a friend up front and she got in fine, but she's one of the few. I went to a Presbyterian church to assist voters who were still in line, 500 still in line, as the results were called at 8 o'clock, to give out water and to give out food. This is how much I appreciate this process and I would be a hypocrite sitting up here today if I didn't say that your vote counts, but mine doesn't. Because my provisional ballot, we still don't know if it counts. Thank you very much for listening.
Okay. Thank you very much and thanks for sharing your experience and thanks for helping out that day.
Appreciate it.
I appreciate it very much. Okay. So there's a number of questions asked. I'm gonna go ahead and call up Helen or Karen, or one if not the other. If you guys, I saw you furiously taking notes. My colleagues were taking notes as I was running the meeting.
Chairman, members of the board, if we could, one of the things that has continually come up is about provisional ballots. And if I could have an individual who is in charge of dealing with provisional ballots and he can explain to you the number we saw, the number that were approved, and the number that were not approved, and the reasons for those.
Okay. So if we're gonna go into provisional, and that's fine. Is there a specific question, Steve, you want to answer or just, just a quick report on that?
So just, just one. And on Election Day, I think it was the, I think it was, Jim Burns brought it up, on Election Day. So, and this may explain the email too. There was, there were possibly some polling centers that ran out of one particular congressional district ballot and then perhaps were other congressional district. Democrat District Seven, I go to vote, they don't have District Seven. Well, here are used District Nine. Was that the case?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Galardo, it is possible that there was, there was not the District Nine but the District Seven. But with the e-poll books, we know what district every single voter was in. So as two emergencies that you were talking about, so what have you got planned? One is use, as long as you're using a Democratic ballot, so they get to cast their vote. The second is that the touchscreen is alive and well in every single precinct. It has unlimited ballots. And those were the two.
But Karen, going back to this CD, it's gonna tell me how many, how many in District Seven voted for Bernie Sanders? How many voted for Hillary Clinton? Those totals may not be accurate if you had voters using, in District Seven, using District Nine ballots.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Galardo, at the polling place, this was a combine of all, altogether. And I think you do have the information that you need to determine, did a person vote and what district are they, are they registered in?
But, Mr. Chairman, Karen, I guess my question is more the accuracy of the canvas. Instead, I mean, it's, it's not if they voted or not, but did they receive the correct ballot?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Galardo, I do not believe we, I do not believe we ran out of ballots at any one particular polling place, but had any of the people at the polling place been concerned, they could have voted on the touchscreen. We did have a number of people vote on the touchscreen at different places, usually because they're, they're disabled.
Okay. Good. Do you still want to do a quick presentation on provisionals?
If I could have Ray Balensway to just run through the number that we had and the disposition in the various categories.
Thank you, Ray. Thanks for being here today.
Mr. Chair, members of the board. Again, Ray Balensway, Assistant Director, Maricopa County Elections. I know the questions that come up with regards to provisionals, so we have just finished, as Helen and Karen mentioned yesterday. We, the total, and the numbers already have been provided. We did have the 46. numbers already have been provided. We did have the 46, the 4,631 that were considered ballots counted, which made up various groups. And then, we had the 20,008 that were invalidated. And of that, again, the numbers are already provided, 18,322 were not eligible to vote in this election. That makeup is those individuals which were using the term independent, which is theoretically not a recognized party, but to identify anybody that's not affiliated with the parties that were voting. So, there could be some Libertarians in there that were not eligible, but that would be the total number, 18,322. In that, within that, there's also makeups of individuals that were not registered, meaning they came to the polls, there is nothing on the file for them. And before I go forward with all of these numbers, know that every single one of these provisionals, not only were they first checked, they were second checked, and to some extent, third. So, there's not one decision made on these particular ballots, provisional, that was not at random or ever 100% were looked at by a staff member, down to a second check manager, down to a third check, specifically on the not-eligibles. Because we know that was a question with regards to how many individuals were systematically changed independent and this kind of misnomer, but again, those all were reviewed. So, again, not registered, 1,162. Incomplete information on the provisional, we had 115. That is a makeup of the individual just signed the form. Now, that could be contrary to, either the board didn't inform them, but again, there was 115 that were incomplete. We couldn't make out that form to identify.
And then, to that point, Mr. Chairman, Ray, the 115, what, I guess, what constitutes an incomplete form besides not having a signature? What else, what is a must on a provisional ballot that needs to be provided or to be accepted? And what is it that, I mean, what was actually missing that said, "Nope"?
Mr. Chair, Supervisor Galardo, the actually, even, we've even gone away from the signature being a requirement, and by that I mean, because to get that form, we actually have a digital signature that you've captured. There used to be in the old days, two years ago, if I may, before technology, that we utilize. So, the only things that are required are a name, identifiable name, and an address that we can tie back to that's a valid address. I will say the majority of these, in all honesty, are either the name was not identifiable, the handwriting on there, but I would say 90%, having touched most of the manager's screen, were individuals who wrote Peel Box 3, saying, "I reside at." You cannot reside at a Peel Box. You are identifying yourself as a registered voter and you're saying, "We can't find John Smith at Peel Box 32." There is no John Smith at Peel Box 32, but even with that, you're attesting that you reside at this in Maricopa County, so we couldn't identify the voter or associate them back to.
And Mr. Chairman Ray, is that, I'm sorry, is that statutory in terms of the requirements or is that internal election procedures rules? Or, I guess, who makes those guidelines that you, you've got to be able to read the signature or you have to put your physical address? Is that statutory?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Galardo, it actually is statutory but not in that specifics, meaning we're not saying you have to read the signature. What it is, it has to be the, in statute, and also in the Secretary of Procedures Manual, which is, has force and effective law. They identify anything that's statute is ambiguous, meaning it has to be identifiable to a given individual or voter. That's the statute in its layman's turn. Then, the Secretary of State's Procedures Manual will identify, meaning what does that mean? Well, if you have a John Smith, can you effectively say that's one of the 1,000 that we have on file and associate that ballot to that particular voter?
But, Mr. Chairman Ray, so just so I understand, the 115, if they were, if we were able to, the office was able to read the name and identify the address, they would have been counted, correct?
Mr. Chair, Supervisor Galardo, that is absolute. If we could identify that voter and identify them as the, and using the, and I apologize to the John Smiths out there, but if they were John Smith and we could identify by the date of birth, there's also a date of birth. That's why even when Director Osborne asks for individuals wanting to list that. We have hundreds of seniors, juniors, I myself being a junior. So, if we could identify that date of birth, find that John Smith, and we absolutely made that effort to identify and associate that.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Okay. Still going?
Just the further numbers if you need and must. Some of those are just, like I said, the 18,322, and specific to that was, again, that is a makeup of individuals that are not eligible. We have early ballots that were sent to county, which you already mentioned, 168. And again, the makeup of the good, if you want to know that, I have that as well. Assuming those are, were not in question, so those were made good. But I will identify that the majority of them, 2,628 of the valid ones, were new residents, which is a standard which we have. Individuals are not aware, that they have not updated for a year plus, and so, the majority of those are new resident and/or something with regards to their address that we had to correct.
Okay.
And, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman Ray, talk to me about Service Arizona.
Mr. Chair, Supervisor Galardo, Service Arizona, yes, about your questions would be.
It's been the topic of discussion. Where they are, and maybe this is a question that has to be directed to the state as well. For those voters that showed up at the polls, were PND, had a voter ID card that said, "I'm a lifelong Democrat," they were given a provisional ballot, correct? Or no?
Mr. Chair, Supervisor Galardo, an individual who showed up with the ID card that said that they are Democrat but our system did not, were indeed given a provisional ballot because although they may have a voter ID card as old as it is, and I inferred and made a comment earlier to Tom Purcell, that my driver's license say I weigh 180, but it doesn't necessarily hold true any longer. It's 189. But anyways, but all truth be known that, yes, you could have a card, but it does, it could be, as everyone knows, we've done mass mailings of cards. So, they would have it there, not in the system as a Democrat would have been correct.
So, if they're PND, they're claiming with or without a card, they're claiming they're lifelong Democrat or Republican, they were given a provisional ballot. Would anyone be turned away for not having a card or everyone would be given a provisional ballot?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Galardo, actual federal law requires the right to vote a provisional ballot, and every voter was identified that they are eligible to vote provisional and would have been given a provisional. Outside of the ID at the poll requirement, which you still have to prove some side of conditional provisional, is another factor, which if you didn't have ID but at all, but yes, everybody would have been issued a ballot.
And Mr. Chairman Ray, how does that handle? How are those handled? If Service Arizona, if it's true what media is reporting and what was stated at the public hearing, that voters had their party affiliation changed through Service Arizona without the authority of the voters, and they go to the polls and they vote, how is that corrected? Or how are those ballots handled? And how many were there?
Mr. Chair, Supervisor Galardo, I can tell you that the 18,322 is the total number of individuals that we show registered within the system as something other than Rep. But further into our research, we've done and we identified approximately 5,500 that were Service Arizona. Actually, let me back up. There were about 15,000 that were Service Arizona related. In our query, however, the majority of them were removed from, they were still reviewed to see their registration forms, but they didn't have a modification to a party caused by Service Arizona. So, in other words, we were, we specifically narrowed down to approximately 4,500 individuals, which is not, which is going to our third check, which I mentioned, which we normally would not do, but we did narrow down of these 18, there were 4,500 that were Service Arizona related. And by, and when I say Service Arizona, I shouldn't, I'm just using your term, it's actually MVD office, because there are two methodologies. Service Arizona is online. When a voter goes online to the service, www.servicerazona.com, you walk through a wizard that you can register to vote. That site does not allow you to leave a blank. It mandates before you can move forward, you select Dem, Rep, Lib, Green, or None. Individuals that selected None is, they have absolutely, and we can identify those forms, have absolutely done that at some point in their registration. Those individuals that were identified as done on the internet, Service Arizona, are actually those that we say those are what the individual voter had requested.
Supervisor Chukri.
Mr. Chairman, to that point, Ray, I think that's a unique observation because part of what today's meeting is about is plotting a course forward as to make sure how we prevent this from happening yet again in subsequent elections, future elections here. And there is clearly some disconnect here with, and we'll phrase it as Service Arizona, the Service Arizona model, because I had constituents reach out to me that simply wanted to update their address, wanted to go and make sure that their registration was who they were as a party. And regardless of what they put in, it still somehow defaulted to independent or another party designation that they were not. So, as part of us going forward, I think if we're, as we're taking notes, we're building a case on how we don't let this happen again. This MVD portion, Service Arizona portion, is an absolute must that we must look at correcting because I do think well-qualified people who know and are proficient in how they can update their address and still yet, they did not receive a ballot, still yet, they were the wrong party designation, so.
And Mr. Chairman Ray, how many of those were counted? How many provisional ballots that, maybe counted or not counted, that had a party change? I guess that's the question.
Mr. Chair, Supervisor Will Cox.
Mr. Will Cox?
I'm sorry, Supervisor Galardo.
You have been here a long time.
It was that spot that was previously occupied. I apologize for that. Supervisor Galardo, the total of, after upon all that third review narrowing it down to 4,000 individual voters in that 18,322 that had a form that could have been done by a customer service representative, that could have been missed keyed, if that may be the case, we had a total of 46.
46?
46 voters that we considered them Office errors, meaning upon review, and I would tell you now that 26 of those were because we could not retrieve an application done in 2007. So, they went into an MVD office, 2007, and to some extent, either they or the MVD agent marked None for them, and we received that. And this is, again, almost nine years ago, and they have been voting as an independent, for lack of a better word, for those nine years. Those 26 were identified as, and we, kind of tie goes to the runner, we went ahead and honored them as them indicating they were cast as a Democrat. The other ones were identified that there was a error in, and again, out of the 1.9 or up to 2 million forms, we had identified close to 20 of them that should have been, when the form was received, keyed to a Dem and a Rep. And so, those 20 out of is where we're at.
Okay. Karen?
I think it, we need to point out that we're working with the Department of Transportation, Mr. Chairman. We are working with the Department of Transportation and the Secretary of State's office to make sure that we have everything in the easiest possible interaction with the Department of Transportation. But we have worked with them through the weekend and we appreciate their cooperation.
Thank you. Looking at the, Steve, looking at the clock. I mean it.
One last question, one last question. Because it's, considering the number of independents we have, which is a third of the voter file, is it possible that some of those voters may have had their party affiliation changed from Republican to Democrat to PND and may have been on Pebble, that should have received an early ballot but didn't because of the change? They should have received some type of notification like the sample ballot. Is it possible, and we're talking around seven, I don't know, 700,000 people were voters, is it possible that some of them out there, because of Service Arizona or MVD, however we want to call it, could have been disenfranchised because of Service Arizona and never got their early ballots because they are on Pebble, or never got a notification on where to go to vote?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Gallardo, see, I got that right. A couple of things. Number one, we only found 20 out of the million nine that were in error. Number two, I want to point out that the provisional ballot is the safeguard. The provisional ballot has always been the safeguard. If you walk in, there's a sign on the wall that says you have a right to vote. So, if we, no matter what has happened, we give you a ballot. And then, that's why the polling place burns, the whatever. We've always had a backup plan. The machine doesn't work. All these things that can happen, you're not correctly on the file. You don't believe that you're correctly on the file. That's why we take them in and we went over and over and over. Anything is possible, but I tell you, 20 out of that many were darn few in my book.
And Mr. Chairman Karen, I think my concern is those that were never notified. It isn't that they, not the ones that went to the polls, it's the ones that didn't go to the polls because they were not notified. You know, all of us in the room, probably, we follow elections, we vote every time. It's right there with our, you know, with family and church. I mean, we vote. But there's so many voters out there that don't know. And I think the possibility, and that's why I really want to dive into Service Arizona later on in the future, as we move on, because is there the possibility of voters that are in the other category, because according to statute, they're not going to be given their Pebble, even though they are signed up for Pebble, and they're never going to be notified, this is where you go to vote?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Gallardo, in the world of infinite possibilities, there is always a possibility that anything can happen. But I'm telling you, we have a call center that took 11,000 calls per day. Am I registered? You can go on, for those folks that were concerned, they can go on the website and find out. They can go on Secretary of State's office and find out. But those 11,000 folks that called every day, and we could have not done this without two people, two groups. One was the poll workers, thank you to them, and the second was that call center. They hung in there with us time after time after time, and we were able to check that. But, in the world of what ifs?
Thank you. Okay. Ray?
Mr. Chair, Supervisor Galardo, and if I may, to reiterate Karen's offer to have, I don't know why I'm welcoming that, because I'm the one that has to research those, but we definitely, I would tell you from a personal note, if you're hearing personal stories, that I had over 150-plus voters standing behind me and my desk, checking because they were lifelong Democrats or lifelong Republicans, to be frank. And we stood there with, and we looked at their history, and when I showed them the form that was handwritten by them and they marked that box None, the first thing was, I didn't realize that's what that meant. Now, I'm not saying that that's true and holds true, but it is the case that we're more than willing to research those. That's what we want to do. We're trying to prove the positive, not something that's negative. So, give us those names, individuals that friends of, third cousins of my brother, I don't, can't look up, but I can absolutely with that name prove the positive and we're willing to do the work to make that so.
Okay, so thank you. Thank you Ray for being with us today and giving us your perspective and your answers. Now, there was a couple of questions from the audience that you guys were writing questions furiously down. Can you answer some of those? I was trying to run the meeting, so I didn't get a chance to write them, but.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Kleiman, I believe, is at first, and he said, "If we had saved this money in 2014, I mean, 2012, that we could have held on to that." These bills, as has been since the start, when you have a bill for whatever it is, truck rental, gas, polling place workers, whatever, we are reimbursed totally just that much. This is not a money that we can put away for rainy days. So, that is, it's each election by itself and done on fiscal year. So, we were not able to keep any extra money. I was trying to find some that I might be able to answer other than the touchscreen. Oh, one of the, Patricia, I believe, Jason, was talking about the polling places in November. There will be 724 places, polling locations, in the primary and in the general. We are not changing from that. That was the DOJ-approved level, and we are sticking with those 724.
Karen, you just brought up a question for Supervisor Chukri.
Okay.
Karen, what about May, though? What, are we still reassessing that for the May election? How many polling places will have?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chukri, we're going for double. We're trying everything we can do to get double the polling places for the May election, if we can possibly recall in places, but have to be, have to be large. But remember, in May, Mr. Chukri, there will be no issue with the independents because everybody can vote. There will be, there will be an excess of 1,300,000 ballots that will be sent out. And I would remind you that on Friday, we mailed the military and overseas for May, but we're going for double. We are trying, we have met with Supervisor Gallardo and Senator Quesada. We met with some of the other groups that have said, "Let me, let us help you," and we are trying. That's what they're back in the office doing right now, calling these places, and we're trying to get to double.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's a great question, because I think all five of us were about. That's a great question, because I think all five of us were about to ask that question. So thank you for that. Was there any, did you guys write any other questions of, I'm noticeably missing, I just asked Andy if there was one? I think there were more, I think there were more statements than questions, but-
Mr. Chairman, there was one other, and could we have the polling longer? We have 27 days ahead of time that you can come into any of the three offices that Mrs. Purcell has, our office here, our office down at Third and Lincoln, our office in the East Valley. 27 days is open, that's when we mail the early ballots as well, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to clarify, the comments that are being made are not statements. These are legitimate problems that have been identified by even elections officials and others that have been engaged in this for a long time. These are issues that have been introduced at the legislature, they're not just statements, they are legitimate problems. And I think Tuesday's election was a perfect storm. It's a collaboration of 60 polling places and a slew of issues that have never been addressed. I think the advocacy network put it best in a news conference where they said, the blame is to go around, and it starts with the state, the governor's office, the legislature, all the way down. So they're not just statements, they're legitimate problems.
So Steve, on that point, I appreciate it. As you guys know, I talk in a farmer lexicon, I'm not a polished politician like somebody sending to my left, weigh my left. So, I'd like to start with my colleagues, you guys are still here to answer some questions, further questions.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, Sandy.
I would, and this probably goes way back, and I think I might have heard the answer. Thank you. When did we begin, or when did the presidential preference election come about? Was that '92? Is that what?
The legislation was in 1992, yes.
And how did, even from my own just memory, which seems to be failing me, how did we pick our candidate before then? As parties, was that similar to the caucus systems that everyone else, so many others are doing around the country?
Mr. Chairman Supervisor Knastic, similar to what some of the other people are doing in caucuses around the country, we are kind of involved in part of that right now. For the Republican Party, they asked us to do their legislative district elections, where they elect people to go to their state convention, which we held April 30th. We will also conduct that election, and that's where they choose their national delegates. As we now see in the legislation, the party, each one of the individual parties must support on at least the first ballot, the person who wins the state. So that has already been determined here in Arizona. That used to be, okay, the delegates to the legislative districts, they all supported certain candidates, and then they went to the state convention, and they supported certain candidates, and they got to be national delegates in supporting certain candidates. So it's, the process really is still being done. We started doing elections last Saturday, we did one on Saturday, we did three on Monday, four on Tuesday. I don't think we're doing any tonight, but we have them for the rest of it. So we'll do the majority of the legislative districts within Maricopa County. And that's the, kind of the old form, but still, in their bylaws, that they must conduct also.
Okay, and what was the, I guess, the issue of the day in 1992 that resulted in coming up with this, what some describe as a beauty pageant? You know, these preference elections that, in many cases, I think disenfranchised voters because their candidate's already long gone by the time, you know, the vote day comes.
Mr. Chairman Supervisor Knastic, I think the rationale was that, one of the things that they wanted more attention drawn to the state of Arizona, not only from, well, basically from the presidential candidates, that they would come here and talk to the people because there would be something going on in the way of a presidential preference. And I think if you look historically back, there has only been a couple of times that the person who won the primary, the presidential preference election here in Arizona, was still a candidate by the time we got to the national convention.
Any further questions, Andy? I can roll back if you're distilling that one.
Well, I would like to, and I've been out of town for a few days, spotty news coverage down in Mexico, but there's been discussion, I understand, from, it sounds like the governor and others calling for future preference elections to include independents in those party ballots, is that-
That was the, excuse me, Mr. Chairman Supervisor Knastic, that was what I heard came out from the governor's office, yes.
Well, then, doesn't that, to me, that seems to, this might not be the discussion for the day, but then, what's the point of having a party at all if it's an open to anybody that wants to cast a ballot in your party? Maybe the conversation with the legislature should be, let's roll it back, let the parties pay for their own processes and conduct their own elections, and take all this confusion and expense off the table.
Mr. Chairman Supervisor Knastic, I guess that's one of the things that the legislature and everybody else is going to look at, and there's talk on both sides of how to do that.
So you guys mull the answer over as that one came up. I was thinking, I picked up some scurrying over here on my right side. Supervisor Barney?
Well, I've been furiously, or feverishly, as you said, taking notes, trying to stay on top of this. There's a lot of content, a lot of dialogue, much like drinking from a fire hose, but what I believe is that we've got a lot of facts, and then we've also got a lot of feelings, which are real, and perception is often reality, at least to me. And so I think going forward, which is our real goal here, we've got to try to separate between the fact and the fiction, and figure out what we can do so this doesn't happen again. And frankly, I would, I think that probably universally, our public speakers today were Democrats, some that I know, and I would compliment them for their respect and their decorum and their perspectives. I think they brought good views and things that we need to take into play. And we will. And we've got to do it now, because we've got an election on May 17th. And frankly, I believe that my Republican friend Helen Purcell and my Democrat friend Karen Osborne are the best positioned people in the county to do that. And so I know there's those that disagree, and we can agree to disagree, and I appreciate, no, and I appreciate the, I know there's something in the air that's causing people to cough, and that's okay. You know, that's the beauty of this process. I respect your passion and your decorum in trying to help all of us protect our democratic privilege. So I'm grateful, I really am. This has been a very engaging process. The thing that I would clarify is that, and Supervisor Gallardo said this definitively at the legislature on Wednesday, we've heard it time and time again, we heard it from Mr. Barton, this isn't about money, this wasn't about money, this is not about the financial conditions. This was based on decisions, based on experts, if you will, if I could be so bold, that took data from previous elections. And here's the facts, we're all entitled to our own opinions, but not our own definition of the facts, if they're true. And you could say, this is great for Denny's Gee Whiz book and mark it up as that, but here they are. We, if you look at this canvas that we're going to either approve or disapprove today, and I'm in support of approving it, for the record, and I'll make a motion if the chair decides to ask for one at some point in this meeting, 73% of the voters fall under the early ballot category, and 27% didn't, of those that are registered that were eligible for this election. Okay? That's empirical, that's a fact. Interestingly, of those voters that showed up, 60% of those that exercised their democratic privilege were early ballot voters, and 26% showed up at the polls. Now, that's in line with historical numbers. That's, again, based on, we can go back further than 2008, but that's 2008, 2012. The other thing that's interesting for the Gee Whiz books that we all have out, this decision was based on a historical trend, starting in 2008, 59% were early ballots, in 2012, 80% were early ballots. I'm talking about preference elections, because that's a unique anomaly in Arizona, and that's what we're here to talk about today. 86% for 2016. Now, that's the actual percentage of vote that was rendered by a qualified electorate exercising their democratic privilege. And so I think that the conditions that led to the fiasco, as it's been called, the mistake as it's been accepted, we fell down as a county last week. We did. And you can call us stupid, you can call us ignorant, you can tell us how dumb we look, but you can't call us dishonest, because it was based on empirical data that led to legitimate and fair assumptions that guided us to accept a voter platform that anticipated 1,381 voters per location. That's empirical. Now, we can talk about all the externalities, provisionals, independents, the weather, whatever we want to talk about, that led to the fiasco, but the goal to me, and I think I would hearken back to Ms. Jason, I would hearken back to Ms. Pastras, the goal, we can spend all day and all night talking about why and how we fell down, but unless we allow that to telegraph and translate into how we're not going to fall down again on May 17th, and how we're not going to fall down in August and November, then we're wasting our time. So all I would say, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Helen and Karen, the public who are here, supporting this great democratic privilege, I feel like we're well-positioned to pivot as we must, and fix the problems that existed that caused a dire circumstance that cannot and should not ever exist again in Maricopa County. So nobody's hiding behind the legislature, they gave us a bad hand, they dealt us a bad hand. We're going to deal with it, we're going to fix it. So for me, Supervisor Knastic talks about who should vote, who shouldn't in a preference election. We won't talk about this again for four years, or maybe eight, I don't know. But that's a legislative decision, that's not this legislative body. If the governor wants to work with the chambers at the Capitol to adjust that, that's great. I think I would support that. I don't believe that we ought to have the taxpayers fund a vote, or a ballot initiative that precludes a population of voters. And right now, that's what happens under the current statutory construct with the presidential preference election, a unique anomalistic circumstance here in Arizona. So, going forward, we've got a lot of work to do long before we get to the next preference election. We've got to make sure that we pull up our bootstraps, and that we don't fall down again on 17th. We've heard great feedback from you, we all watched the legislative hearing on Monday, Supervisor Gallardo was there. And you have my commitment, and I share this with each of my colleagues here, we're going to go to work and make sure that we work with our elected recorder and the elections director to make sure that it doesn't happen again. That sounds like a verbose, long political speech, but I think it represents exactly where I've tried to find myself over a week of a lot of feedback, input, conversations, emails, phone calls, dialogues, few courier pigeons that delivered ranting messages, it's all good. We need to shift and be better, and we will. And so, Mr. Chairman, when you're ready, I'm prepared to make a motion that we exercise the business of the people and accept this canvas, and that we move forward and make sure that under no circumstances that we get caught in a circumstance that would have us allow what happened last week to happen again. And I'm confident in our team that we can do that if we let them get to work.
Thank you, Denny.
Mr. Chairman? I'm going to heed your warning and not clap. Thank you, Denny.
Thank you for that, Andy.
Appreciate it. As always Supervisor Barney, brings great clarity to very emotional and sometimes very difficult to understand issues. So thank you, Denny, and if that was a motion, I would second the motion or be prepared when it's time.
So we have a motion in a second to agenda item number one. Steve looked like he wanted to say something, so Steve?
I always have something to say.
Well, you've said a lot today.
You mean Steve from the Legislature and the Elections Department?
That's right.
Our best lobbyists at the Capitol.
Our best and brightest, go ahead.
You know, while I vowed, when I was there, I was telling Helen, I was at the legislature, I vowed never to go back at the legislature, and here I was, back at the legislature. But that's okay. Mr. Chairman, my fellow board members, I think Danny Barney, Supervisor Barney put it best, and, you know, March 22nd definitely was a terrible day for Maricopa County, particularly for the voters that showed up to exercise the most fundamental right, the right to vote. I was out there at many of the polling places, I went out there to see the lines, and started, it was around 10 o'clock in the morning when I started getting phone calls, and I darted out to many of the polling places. Then I was out there till late, probably 10:30 at night, when I saw our own county manager standing in line to exercise his right. And it was probably the most hurtful feeling to be able, I mean, if I come across passionate and talkative on this issue because this is so important to me, I believe everyone has the most fundamental right to be able to exercise it and to see the long lines, and really feel helpless at that time. You know, when you're out there on Seventh Avenue in Glendale and see, you know, 500 people in line, CNN, the national media's already calling the results, and there wasn't really much we can do. But the fact is that, you look at what happened Tuesday, it was definitely the perfect storm. I think the 60-place polling place, that was the hot fudge and the whipped cream and cherry on top, but I'm sorry, the state legislature has made the ice cream. And they need to take the blame as well. I think, like I said, the advocacy network put it best, when the blame can go all the way from the governor's office all the way down to the county. But nonetheless, there's a lot of folks that can be pointed at, but at the end of the day, how do we move forward? How do we move forward to make sure this doesn't happen again? How do we identify those issues that need to be addressed by the legislature? And I think that's where I'm looking to go. I want to make sure this never happens again. But at the same time, we have an election in front of us that we have an obligation to decide if we're going to accept this canvas or not. There are too many unanswered questions, I believe, in terms of, do we have accurate numbers on the congressional side? Were ballots being used to help voters that were not in that congressional district? That's a big unanswered question to me. Provisional ballots, I think, still need to be looked at. I know there are some questions that were brought up in public comment, but I believe that before we move forward in canvassing this election, because the canvas is the end of the election, it's topping it off, before we do that, I think there's some dialogue that still needs to be talked about, and some areas we need to look. The scope of the breakdown was sweeping, and the issues were serious. And I think there's a lot of unanswered questions that remain. I cannot in good conscience certify the results to be true and accurate, and as a result, I must be voting no.
Okay, well, we're not to the vote yet, but that's good, thank you for that. Mr. Chukri?
Mr. Chairman, I want to reflect too, just on the last week's activities, I think my comments last week was that the Maricopa County brand failed last week, which it certainly did, but what we saw is something different in politics, and that is, many of us campaigned on transparency, these very meetings are now recorded, and you can access them back. But what you saw in Ms. Purcell, in Ms. Osborne, was not a pointing of the finger. You didn't see them say, it's so-and-so's fault. She accepted the blame. And we talk about decorum, and I thank the folks that are here today that spoke publicly, because you did issue, you did embrace decorum in your time here today, but no one more so has exhibited decorum than Ms. Purcell the past week, under some pretty stressful circumstances. And every time, there's a time in all of our lives that we've fallen down, to quote Mr. Barney, and Maricopa County did last week. But that being said, as the- But that being said, as the saying goes, we're all in the soup here. It wasn't just Maricopa County, it was, there were a lot of other extenuating circumstances that if we really want to get to the root of the matter going forward, needs to be looked at. And I think that Mr. Barton, Ms. Pope, Mr. Higgins, just to name a few that were here today, touched on some of those things. So, if I might, I would suggest to the media, I would suggest to those folks that are angry, that, that you have every right to be angry. But we also have a job to do to restore your faith in the process, and we will do that. We will restore your faith, faith in the process. So, how do we do that? We do that by looking forward. We do that by, I want to know why, why did Mr. Higgins, why, on the e-poll system that I think we spent $5 million on some time ago, why did his name keep coming up, his party affiliation keep coming up wrong? Why, why did some of these other things happen? And let's just make sure that we tighten that up and find out as to how those mistakes occurred and make sure that they don't repeat themselves going forward. So, so with that, Mr. Chairman, I thank you for, for this hearing, for this meeting. I thank Ms. Purcell and Ms. Osborne for being here, for standing against the music the past week and not shrugingly saying it was someone else's fault. I think we all share the blame, this body included, but we also share the responsibility going forward that we ask these questions and that we, we make sure that this is not repeated come May, come August, and come November of this year. Thank you.
Okay. Well, would I, just thank you guys. I think I gave everybody a chance to say something, and I just, I just wanted to showcase this board and what we do right. There's plenty of governments to do things wrong, and I will reflect back on the legislative hearings, if that's the way they do business, do business and pummeling people and not letting to get to respond and not letting them get to the ability to show their report, I think, I think that's wrong, and they need to shoulder a little bit of that blame. Number two, I want to thank you guys for coming here and being here today. Some of you are not familiar with the process, but for you to come here today, spend time with us, give us your statements, opinions, judgments, whatever you would like to call it. Again, I am working on my lexicon here as a farmer, but the realness about this situation is, and I think I hear loud and clear from the board, that we voted unanimously for 60 poll sites using our best judgment. I don't make an apology for that. We're not making an apology for that. We did the best we could, listening to our people, do their jobs correctly. I do not apologize, I personally do not apologize for a line at a polling place. We work so hard to engage the public, to come out and do what they should do constitutionally, to vote for the candidates of their choice, because people have lost their lives for that. What I will absolutely apologize for is the length and the duration of those lines. We had very much to do with that. We had 60 polling places, that was not the right pick. We are working on it, though. You can see how we make political sausage up here, and it's not, this is just a segment in front of the public on how we do things. We identify a problem, we listen to people, and we fix the problem. That's why I think all of us took this job and ran for these jobs. At the time when we ran for elections or the appointments, we felt the county had problems, and we thought we could use our experience to fix those problems. And I think that's what you, I think that's what you're seeing up here. We are going to use our best experience to fix the problem and going forward and make sure that Maricopa County has, is that shining star and that best brand of government. And if that means coming out here and having a long meeting and apologizing to our public, we're here to do that. So, I thank you all for being here. I was wondering maybe quite possibly if we have the ability to make the motion again so we know what we're voting on. If you could restate your motion, Mr. Barney?
Mr. Chairman, pursuant to ARS 16-642 through 16-645, I would move that we accept the official returns as presented today by our elections department, recognizing there's been a lot of comment and, and input that will help us as we go forward, that we accept the official canvas as presented.
Thank you, Denny. I hear the motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would second that, that motion, and just for the record, I think I heard, I believe I heard answers, sufficient answers to every question that was posed by Supervisor Gallardo regarding any, any reason to be paused here that, or to not vote today, I think has been answered. So, I don't have any hesitation in doing this, and when the time's right, I'll vote.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed?
No.
Four ayes, one nay, motion passes. Thank you all very much for being here. That concludes the business. And a motion to adjourn?
Tell them, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to adjourn. Or adjourn.